First of all, we want to wish everyone here a happy, prosperous, and a healthy 2020. A great vision for 2020, right? And I just want to recognize our airport family, the staff. Kristi, you guys just did an amazing job, and thank you so much for that great groundbreaking. And that was last week, and on the 23rd, we have a really, another amazing groundbreaking. Great things for Prescott, right? We're breaking grounds on some, some new things happening, and that will be for the Banner Hospital that's going to be out in Whispering Rock. So wonderful things for our city, and all because of all of you are partners with us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Now we'll have an invocation by Pastor Jesse Burke with Sanctuary Covenant Church, and then followed with the pledge led by Councilman Blair.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much as we gather here, just for all the many blessings that this room represents, the, the freedom that we have, the, the time that we have, the gifts that you've given us of intelligence, of, of businesses, of this community, and just another year of life here in Prescott. So, Lord, as we gather here, we do acknowledge your blessings, then we ask for a continued blessing just over these leaders here, over this city, over this community, and, and this whole state, just as, as they deal with the business of taking care of people. We know that you have given us government, you've given us leaders to guide us, to protect us, and to lead us, Lord. And so I just pray for these leaders here, that you give them wisdom, that you give them strength, that you give them discernment, that you give them integrity and power to, to do the things that are right in your eyes. So, Lord, we lift up them to you, we lift up this meeting today, we just ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Burke. Let's call roll, please.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Here.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Present.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
And Councilman Sishka.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Let's move on to proclamations.
Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Day of Service.
Well, it's my privilege to read this proclamation. I look forward to doing this on Martin Luther King Day on Monday as well, be joining you guys at the Prescott Methodist Church. This is Proclamation, Martin Luther King Jr., Day of Service. Whereas Reverend Dr. King taught us about equality for all, we will remember to treat all peoples regardless of race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender, or religious and/or spiritual practice with dignity and justice. And whereas Dr. King also taught us about nonviolence, we will remember that nonviolence leads to peace and the manifestation of a beloved community. And whereas we will remember to manifest generosity in the giving and sharing of material, nutritional, and spiritual property, because Reverend Dr. King taught us about compassion. And whereas we will remember to choose words and actions in love rather than hate, knowing that all is great is only achieved and maintained through love, because Reverend Dr. King taught us about love. And whereas Dr. King's dream for these teachings to be manifest for all people everywhere will lead us all to continue working to make that dream a reality in our community, and now, therefore, I, Greg L. Mangarelli, Mayor of the City of Prescott, do hereby proclaim, in honor of Martin Luther King Jr., Day of Service, through intentional conversations and strategic action about diversity and inclusion really looks like for all people who live, work, and play in the greater community, we are keeping Martin Luther King's dream for a better future alive. And Kendra Hobson's here with us. Would you like to say a few words, Kendra?
Sure. So, we'd like, the MLK Committee would like to invite everyone out to the celebration. We're starting with a march at the Welcome Center at the Prescott College, that's at 10:00 a.m., and then followed by a little bit of food and fellowship between 10:30 and 11:00, and then the celebration will start at 11:00 a.m. at the Prescott United Methodist Church not too far from here. So, everyone's welcome. Hope to see you there.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Downwinders 69th Anniversary.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mangarelli, Mayor Protem Orr, and members of the council. I want to express my sincere thanks for you giving me this opportunity to be here today. First of all, I'd like to show a short video which explains exactly what the Downwinders is.
As the Cold War intensified and the arms race between the United States and the Soviet Union escalated at a shocking pace, the need for more information regarding nuclear weapons became apparent. On December 18th, 1950, President Harry Truman approved the nuclear proving ground, the Nevada Test Site, which was 65 miles northwest of Las Vegas, Nevada. The barren testing range carved out of the Mojave Desert would be home for the next several decades to 928 of the 1,054 above and below-ground nuclear experiments conducted by the United States government. The testing finally ended in September, 1992, when a moratorium went into effect.
Before the moratorium, mushroom clouds were a familiar sight from the Las Vegas Strip.
In 1962, President John F. Kennedy visited the Nevada Test Site. He has been the only sitting president to do so. In 1963, President Kennedy and Soviet President Nikita Khrushchev signed a treaty that required the superpowers to conduct nuclear experiments underground. This historic treaty banned nuclear testing in the air, oceans, or space. The first nuclear experiment in Nevada lit up the desert sky on January 27th, 1951. The radioactive fallout blanketed not only the arid desert, but farm fields, homes, schools, factories, and businesses across the region. The wind carried contamination throughout parts of Arizona, Nevada, and Utah. People living in the affected areas were known as Downwinders. From 1945 to 1962, the United States government conducted hundreds of nuclear tests which exposed citizens to radiation. Employees in the uranium mining industry were also exposed to toxic levels of radiation. In 1990, Congress passed the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act as an apology to individuals who developed certain cancers and other serious diseases related to nuclear weapons testing and uranium mining. Victims or their surviving family members are awarded amounts from $50,000 to $100,000. Free cancer screenings are available to qualified individuals.
In November of 2011, the United States Senate unanimously approved a resolution designating January 27th as the Day of Remembrance for Downwinders in recognition of the harm caused to Americans by fallout from the nuclear testing at the Nevada Test Site. In 1990, the United States Congress passed the RICA Act, signed by President George H.W. Bush, which allowed certain individuals who contracted one of the 19 forms of cancer covered under the RICA Act to apply for compensation. Due to a typographical error, certain areas of Mojave County, Arizona, and Clark County, Nevada were omitted. In 2015, Congressman Paul Gosar introduced the Bipartisan Radiation Exposure Compensation Amendment Act of 2015, better known as HR 3345. In the United States Senate, Senator John McCain introduced the bipartisan bill, HR 1895. These two bills would expand and include the boundaries of areas omitted in the original RICA Act. I have traveled throughout Arizona, Nevada, and Utah, gaining support for those bills by going before city councils, Board of Commissioners, and town officials. The following entities provided written support for Congressman Gosar and Senator McCain's bills: Yavapai County Board of Supervisors, the Town of Prescott Valley, the Town of Dewey-Humboldt, the City of Flagstaff, Lake Havasu City, the City of Kingman, Kingman Board of Supervisors, City of North Las Vegas, Clark County, Nevada Commissioners, Lincoln County, Nevada, and the State of Utah. On the second day of February 2016, Mayor Harry Olberg and the Prescott City Council approved Resolution Number 4317-1526 in support of the aforementioned bills. All of these resolutions, proclamations, and letters of support were from the cities and towns mentioned, were sent to Washington and attached to Congressman Gosar and Senator McCain's bills, and made an official part of the record thereof. Unfortunately, with the untimely illness and passing of Senator McCain, the bill never progressed in the Senate. On January 24th, 2019, Congressman Gosar introduced HR 757, the Downwinders Compensation Amendment Act of 2019. And on March 13th, 2019, Senator Martha McSally introduced HRS 776, cited as the Downwinders Compensation Amendment Act of 2019, both bills with bipartisan support. So, five years later, we are still trying to accomplish the original purpose of bringing that portion of Mojave County, Arizona, and Clark County, Nevada that were omitted into compensation. To date, several more bipartisan bills have been proposed to expand and increase coverage in more states, and to expand the trust fund, which expires in 2022, which funds the compensation for all claimants. The slow movement of bills in the House over the past several years, I am hopeful now that Congress will get back to the people's business, reviewing and passing the aforementioned bills. In closing, I would like to read the most current statistics of the Downwinder claims. As of July 15th, 2012, 25,804 claims under the Act have been approved, expending a total As of November 19th, 2013, 43,68 claims were filed, 748 claims were pending, and 30,701 were awarded. As of March 2015, over $2 billion in total compensation had been paid to 32,000 successful claimants under the Act. As of March 16th, 2016, successful claims have been awarded to 19,555 Downwinders, 3963 onsite participants, 6,214 uranium miners, 1,673 uranium millers, and 328 ore transporters. As of April 20th, 2018, 34,372 claims in total that had been approved with total compensation So, in closing, I would like to thank you again for allowing me to come before you, and ask you to please remember January 27th as a day of remembrance for the Downwinders and all of the troubles that they have in trying to get compensation. Were there any questions?
Thank you, Sherri. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mayor, I'd just like to say, Sherri Hannah, you have been an amazing person to stay in. The tenacity that you have shown with this Downwinders project is, is amazing. Ever since I've known you, and I've known you now for about eight years, and this has been your mission, and I just thank you so much. Publicly, we'd like to thank Congressman Gosar and Senator McSally for helping. You know, there's no compensation that can replace your John and your dad, but it just does say something about this country saying, "We're sorry," and thank you for doing this, Sherri.
Thank you, Billy. And I have to say, I'm still being contacted by people that grew up here, that've come back, or, and asking for help because they've been diagnosed with cancer, so the work goes on.
So, I had the opportunity to hear Frank Shankowitz, Wish Man, and he spoke Friday night, and he talked about his mom, and that his mom, before she passed away, she did receive the compensation of Downwinders because she was a Downwinder.
Great. Glad to hear that.
Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you, Sherri. I think you did a wonderful presentation, and I really appreciate you raising our awareness to this issue. And I'm a Downwinder, my family's Downwinders, and my husband's family are all Downwinders, and I find it, you know, it is mentally stressful just living under that cloud, not knowing what can happen because of what you were exposed to as a child or an adult. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everything.
Yeah, thanks for being here, Sherri. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to Consent Agenda. Would any member like to pull something from Consent? Councilman Good.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'd like to pull Item A for a correction to the December 12th study session minutes.
Very good. Thank you. And Councilwoman Scholl?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull Item B due to a conflict of interest, so just vote on that one separately, and I will step out.
Okay, very good. We'll entertain a motion on the balance of the consent.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 8C through 8F.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Please vote. Always one.
Always me. I swear, I've been off for a couple of months, I forgot.
He just likes the attention. All right, let's look at Item 8A first. Councilman Good?
Yes, I was reviewing the minutes, particularly the special study session where we had developer Mr. Geese talking to the council over at the Hendrickson Theater, and I made numerous questions to Mr. Geese regarding the access to the proposed resort on his development property with one access point being at grade, and questioned and commented a number of concerns that I had about that. And Mr. Geese responded primarily by saying that he had not yet considered that conflict with pevine trail hikers and bikers, and et cetera, and that section was not even included in these minutes. So, I felt that that was a rather impactful series of questions, and I would like to have that added back into the minutes.
Okay. And do you have some, some verbiage there that you have for the clerk, or have you already given it to her?
I discussed it with the clerk, and she said she was going to review the audio and...
Yes, we'll pull the audio from that, as well as the notes that I've taken, and I can certainly send a draft over if you'd like. We can maybe approve this item without the December 12th minutes, and then those can be brought back at the January 28th meeting for your approval.
Matt, would that work okay if we just pulled December 12th minutes from this?
That's fine.
Yep. So, we'll look for an approval for that now, if that's all right. Councilman Good, bring December 12th back later.
That's fine with me. So, should we move to approve the minutes, except for December 12th reference to the special study session?
Second, and I'll second that.
So, let's, yeah, just to clarify, to make sure I heard you okay, let's pull the December 12th special study session minutes all together, and then vote on everything else, and then we'll bring all of those minutes back at one time. Okay. We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, then we'll ask Councilwoman Scholl to step out, and we'll approve, or consider approving, Item 8B. Entertain a motion.
May I move to approve Item B on the Consent Agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
All right. Thank you for that. Let's move on to Consent Ordinance.
Adoption of Ordinance Number 2020-1705, authorizing the acceptance of a waterline easement agreement from GPS Properties LLC, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said waterline easement agreement.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt Consent Ordinance Item 9A.
Motion second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to Item 10A, please.
Public hearing in consideration for a new liquor license application for a Series 12 restaurant license from Benedetto Sal Enzalmo, applicant for Sal's Pizza, location 126 South Montezuma Street. The application fee has been paid, and the sign has been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance. No public comments have been received.
All right. Sal's Pizza, this is on Whiskey Row where the Devil's Pantry was formerly. No more deep-fried Twinkies. Sorry about that, guys. Entertain a motion here.
Mayor, I move to close.
The applicant's not here? Is that right? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Excuse me, Councilman. Come on down. I had been informed that maybe the applicant wasn't going to be here, so I apologize. Should have asked. Yeah, tell us a little bit about your business.
Yeah, it's running, it's good. Just I'm going to put the pizza oven, that's what I want.
Well, great.
I want to make a pizza. I was about Roses Pizza, and I want to make a pizza about Devil's Pantry.
Okay, so you used to be at Roses?
I used to be in Roses. My brother owns at Roses.
Okay.
Now, I'm out of there, so I want to put my, I'm going to do my own thing.
Nice.
So, I want to put a hood there, and there was still a lot of time to put a hood on it.
Okay.
So, as soon as I get the hood, I started making pizzas.
Oh, we can't wait. Where are you, where are you from, by the way?
New York and Sicily. Sicily, New York.
There you go.
Ah, very good. Well, thank you. Yeah.
That's what I do, making pizza, and that's it. I've been serving for eight years in this time.
Well, you'll do well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, you're going to have it by the slice?
Slices, pies, anything. Chicken rolls, everything.
When are you going to open?
It's opening now, just I'm going to wait for the oven, for the department to put the oven on.
Okay. Sounds great.
More importantly, what time are you going to close in the evening?
On Whiskey Row.
I'll be opening at 10 to 11 every day, and weekends, 2 o'clock in the morning, 3 o'clock in the morning, whatever it is.
That's great.
And I'm making the assumption you're Sal.
Sal.
What's your whole name, Sal?
Salvatore.
Very nice.
My middle name is Benedetto Salvatore. That's my middle name.
There we go. Very nice. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate your investment in the city. Thank you.
Moto Bene.
That's right. Wow, glad we didn't miss out on that. Now, you can go ahead.
So, Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve Recommendation for Liquor License Application Number 83953 for a new Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Sal's Pizza, location 126 South Montezuma Street.
Second again?
Lots of seconds on that. We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, very good. Good luck.
Congratulations.
Let's go to Item 11A, please.
Mayor and council, this item was pulled by staff following publication of the agenda. It will be brought back to council for review at a later date, so we don't need to take any action on this item at this time.
Okay, thank you for that. Let's move on to Item 11B, Mr. Tyler Goodman.
Legislative update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Tyler Goodman with the City Manager's Office. I can't believe it's already time to start giving you updates on the legislative session again, but here we are. And we already have a lot going on. As you can see, I handed out this to each of you and putting it up here for the audience and public to see it better. Maybe I'll zoom in a little bit. The session began just yesterday. This week, we'll see really limited activity in committees, but we'll probably see a lot of bills being introduced, being created, and then beginning to be read in each chamber so the process can begin. I've kind of broken it down by sections like I did last year, so I'll jump into the state budget and appropriations, and I'll try to go as quickly as I can through these, but if you have any questions, please stop me. If you remember, last year, we received $7 million over seven years for the hot shots towards PSPRS, so the goal there is to ensure that it's in the, the $1 million for this year is in the base budget, which it, it was last year, and we are going to ensure that it continues to be going forward. Airport funding, I just got good news. Kristi told me that we received the additional $250,000. That will be here soon, and we just got the $1 million, which Representative Campbell helped us get, so that's exciting news. Good things are happening there. We are going to seek further state assistance for the terminal baggage handling system, estimated at $580,000, and then a state and local project for security upgrades at the airport. Basically, we're just trying to ensure that money is going towards the aeronautics division of ADOT so that these things can happen, and that's going to be a goal for this session. As far as the regional park, we've discussed this a little bit. Representative Campbell is also helping on this one, and he has a bill drafted that would appropriate $5 million in this current fiscal year to the Arizona State Parks Board to distribute to the city for the purchase of land to create a regional park in Yavapai County, and so we're going to be moving forward with that. It doesn't have a bill number yet, but it will, and it'll start going through the process. And I heard yesterday, the Heritage Fund, this is something that was swept a lot during the recession years. A bill is coming up this year to appropriate $10 million to that fund, which could help us if we apply and, and receive funding for trails, the Granite Creek Corridor is a possibility in that, and then for historic preservation. So, that would be a good thing if we can get that. For local authority, talking about that subject, short-term rentals, we knew that this would come up again this year. The governor mentioned it throughout the interim, throughout the summer, and Barry received kind of a briefing from Representative Kavanaugh, who has two bills that he's drafting on this subject, and there's probably going to be more. I know there is one from a, another representative that would entirely sweep the current laws regarding no local control, or basically no local control over short-term rentals. They don't think that's going to have any legs, but Kavanaugh is thinking of these two ideas, and he admits himself that this first idea, which is short-term rentals would only be exempt from local control if it's a primary or secondary residence, anything above and beyond that, meaning you're targeting those investment homes if they have three, four, or five units or homes, then there's going to be a lot more strict controls that cities, counties could implement over those, over those homes. He doesn't believe that's going to get very far, so he's introducing a second bill as well, which, as you can see, would allow greater control over occupancy restrictions, on-street parking, and then sound based on decibels. They had limitations for that, and I'm assuming there's probably a few more things. Those have not been formally introduced, so I haven't seen the language on those yet, but we'll keep an eye on those and see how they will impact or potentially help cities. For local funding, three years ago, I can't believe it's been that already, but we've, we discussed, and the legislature passed a couple of bills regarding PSPRS cancer and heart disease presumptions, and a lot of those were incorporated, and this would add on to that. So, the bill has not been introduced yet, but the League of Cities is, is kind of sending out some information that they understand about it, and it would be to include ovarian and breast cancer as part of those cancer presumptions, so we'll keep an eye out for that, and I'll keep you posted once we have official language. And there is a bill, 2145, that has to do with PSPRS and death benefits. It would be that retirement plan, death benefits, and the definition of killed in the line of duty would include suicide. So, that's quite, quite a large shift and a swing. This is something that Barry made me aware of just a couple of days ago, and I have not seen it on the League of Cities radar yet, but I'm assuming it will be, and we have weekly calls and updates with them, so I'm going to keep this one, and we'll keep you informed if, if this starts moving forward and what the implications would be. And jumping down to the bottom, House Bill 2093, we've, we've made mention of this before. I know Councilman Good and I have spoken about this one. This would, well, it's in regards to the Second Amendment and federal laws, and this kind of comes as a response to a lot of the, the happenings in Virginia with counties and cities there, as well as Mojave County here, and Yavapai County, who's discussing Second Amendment, the term sanctuary city for Second Amendment. So, this would be, this would say that any law, treaty, order, act, rule, or regulation of the US government that violates the Second Amendment would not be enforceable in the state, and that the state and counties and cities could not do anything, basically, to enforce, or administer, or cooperate with any such federal regulation. So, we'll see where this goes. I have not seen any bills to the contrary yet. We, we imagine that there would be some... I have not seen any bills to the contrary yet, we, we imagine that there would be some, um, red flag bills this session, um, and we'll see, we'll see if there are any that are dropped, which would kind of counteract this, at least be the other sentiment, so I'll keep you posted on that as well. And then finally, there's some additions to what would be allowed in the executive sessions with, which I think would help cities. So this would allow for the topics of security plans, procedures, assessments for building, buildings, facilities, and IT as well, to be addressed in executive session, so that would help cities as well. And that's all I have for now, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Tyler. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem?
I, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Tyler, here we are again, right?
Yes, we are.
Another legislative session. So Tyler, my question is, I've been reading that where J.D. Messnard is wanting to introduce, and maybe he hasn't done it, but the idea of, um, retiring that thirty-two dollar fee, auto fee sooner, and if it does, how are we gonna replace those funds, because there's concern, then the HERF, which is pretty safe right now because of this, but that they'll start pulling from HERF? Have you heard anything?
I have not, not from Barry and not from the League of Cities at least, but that's always part of the discussion, 'cause I know that they did, through tiers, get rid of it last session, um, I think it was over three years.
But it's over to start over three years, but
Right.
With all this talk about state tax reduction, this is one that he's introducing to do that sooner, which really may affect our HERF fund.
It really could.
So I would just keep that on our radar because we don't want that to happen.
I will, thank you.
Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Do you, have you got a count yet of how many bills were dropped yesterday?
Not yet, but last session, I think there were thirteen hundred and something total last year, so.
And do you know how many actually came out of committee for a vote?
Last year? I don't.
It's a pretty small number relative to the thirteen hundred that get dropped.
Yeah.
So there's a lot to monitor. Um, I do wanna mention that, uh, this will be my second term on the Arizona League's Budget, Finance, and Economic Development Committee, um, but a lot of people think that the league, um, meets with this committee to analyze bills that have been dropped, and that's not really how it works. The league solicits from communities, um, budget, finance, and economic development concerns, usually after the, uh, session has adjourned, so that they can start drafting, um, language, and looking at how much advocacy or opposition they can give, uh, particular issues, so when the legislature convenes, uh, they're prepared to, um, to act as a, as a league. So I just wanna mention, not only to Prescott, but to the county, and to our neighboring cities, that when they have concerns like this, the time to bring them up is now, so that, um, we can start working on it during the summer, during the, um, period where the legislature is not in session, so we can start, uh, working on some of those issues. So I just wanna make sure that, uh, the broader community, uh, understands what the timeline is on those issues. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, comments from the council? Well, this looks good, uh, Tyler, I appreciate your work, as, as well as Barry Ehrens, you know, keeping an eye on all these things, as Councilman Good mentioned, there's a lot to pay attention to, uh, to ensure that we continue to have local, uh, control, and, uh, look forward to see what happens. I did notice in the governor's, uh, state of the state, that he did not mention any red flag or stop order, uh, and I was encouraged by that, that he's not pushing on that agenda item at this point, so, very good. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, let's move on to item eleven C, please.
Approval of the twenty-twenty strategic plan.
Okay, uh, we have a strategic plan that we worked on with, uh, Barry Ehrens here, uh, gosh, let's see, this was in December, is that right?
December seventeenth.
Yeah. So, any, uh, thoughts as we jump into this?
Mayor and council, this document, and I shared this in your packets, um, with you previously to the meeting, this is the document that Barry and I put together following that study session from your feedback, comments, and input. Um, we shared it hopefully enough beforehand, um, in this meeting so that you could get a chance to look at it. Um, I'm happy to take any feedback if there's things we missed, um, but this is, this is what we took and gathered and changed from that meeting.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Rusin?
Thank you, I know a lot of work went into this, Tyler, and, uh, I kind of, uh, showed up on the scene here at the eleventh hour, and, uh, so please bear with me. I, I feel that the, um, strategic plan must reflect the spirit of our community, so, for example, under vision, to be the premier community in the southwest, kinda sounds like could be Chandler or Queen Creek, it's pretty generic. What do you mean by southwest? I would like to change it to, to be the most livable and vibrant community in Arizona. And I'd also like to comment that now we're using our strategic plan to justify mass grading and production homes, which are Phoenix-style development, and I really don't think that reflects the spirit of our community. And our mission, I'd like to amend that, to say we will celebrate our historic past, and then at the end, and strive to preserve our quality of life. But I had, uh, given Tyler a copy of, uh, all my notes, and there's, uh, many other changes that I'd like to, uh, to see additions, uh, to reflect, to make this more, um, Prescott and less generic, but most importantly, uh, include, uh, on page four, under objectives, number one, under, uh, quality of life, I had suggested at the last meeting that we put in, uh, something in reference to water, since, uh, water is so vital to our community and the management, the wise management and conservation of our water. And Preserve the Arizona Groundwater Management Act is, uh, pretty vague in general, and I'd like to replace that with regional cooperation and conservation to reduce the overdraft and to protect the Little Chino Aquifer and preserve the flow of the Verde River. And then under acquisition of land for public ownership, I'd like to include the open space policy, and then state funding for preservation of our unique and scenic wildlands. And, um, under number three, culture and recreational experiences, I'd like, under tactics, to include the downtown entertainment district. Uh, going back to objectives, number one, instead of saying natural resource preservation and conservation, I, I think it should be amended to preservation of our natural beauty and water, and engage in cooperative efforts with the public, political, and governmental entities, uh, subdivisions should be homeowners, and replace natural resources with water and quality of life. And then, uh, goal number four, our service-oriented culture, I have many changes there, but, uh, I think you can kinda get the picture there, thank you.
And I do have those, I did receive those, those changes, Mayor.
And when did you get those, Tyler?
I believe it was last Thursday, I believe it was last Thursday.
It was after the deadline, I confess.
Councilman Siski?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Rusin, I, I don't mean to make, make this personal, but some of this sounds rather elitist. I really do think that, that one person's definition of livable is probably different across this room, and, uh, you know, I think that, um, we can't sit back and, and dictate, we claim that everything is, you know, this is what Prescott is, but realistically, if you ask a hundred people what Prescott is, they'll probably give you a hundred answers. And if we're, if we look at Prescott, what Prescott really is to a lot of people, it's the downtown area and the historic district. Well, that can't be reproduced across Prescott, it's impossible. So, I say, what is Prescott, and what does livable mean? And to say that we're the premier community in the southwest, that's a goal. That is, that we wanna be the best community in the southwest. I don't wanna be limiting our population to just the people who we think should live here, and the places where we think they should live. So that's my personal opinion. I think that we're really kinda teetering here, because I don't think that, that we know really what the people do want. We know what half the voters voted on, but that's only less than half the voters. So, uh, you know, I think that what we have here is a goal to reach, I don't want to, um, kind of pin Prescott with an elitist label, and I think that, uh, what's here is, um, perfect for right now.
Thank you for that. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, more?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think it's, um, really important that the public knows that we spent half a day as a council, which included Councilwoman Rusin, she was in, participated in this, and, um, you know, we've built on this, uh, I think it's an excellent strategic plan, the wordsmithing, you know, I, I think it's important that all of the council participate in this project that we've done, and now it looks like what all of us designed, or came up with, based on what we all felt was important for our city, based on our general plan that was approved by the voters, is now being changed by one council member. And so I think if we are going to change this strategic plan so drastically, that we need to go back into a study session, uh, I, I would not vote to take changes that we just saw and put into our strategic plan, when everybody had the opportunity to participate on the strategic plan. So I guess I would just like to recommend, Mayor, that we go ahead and, uh, vote on what we have, because I think it's important that we have a strategic plan in place, and then if in six months we wanna revisit this, or a quarter we wanna revisit this, but this has been worked on by the last few councils for quite a while. Steve Shiski and I worked with Gene Wilcox on the initial, um, coming up with the big goals, and then as councils, we've built on this over time. So to come the day of a meeting that is to be voted on and make, I think, pretty dramatic changes to the strategic plan, uh, should simply not be allowed. And, um, I, I think we should, I would recommend that we go ahead and vote on it, and then if you wanna revisit this strategic plan in six months, um, that maybe we look at doing that. What is our schedule for usually revisiting the strategic plan? Annual, right?
It's typically annually, we can do it more frequently, I know we discussed, Councilman Blair had an interest in looking at it, not the entire thing, but maybe an element quarterly, just to keep updated.
I, I mean, I, I just think what you're suggesting, Councilwoman, really does change the strategic plan. It's not just a word here and a word there, and we've not seen it until today, and it was after the deadline, so I would just recommend that we, I think it's a, I think it's a good strategic plan, we've all worked on it, and then we go ahead and vote on this, and then if we choose to revisit it in six months, that we do that and take a study session to do it. I think we worked on this for a couple hours, three hours, and worked on it many, many times before. That would just be my recommendation.
Okay. Councilman Rusin?
Uh, thank you both for your inputs, and let me clarify, I guess I didn't say that I, I did reach out and get input from members of the community, and these are, are just suggestions and ideas, uh, I'm hoping to be a catalyst here, uh, for a different direction, and, uh, I'm not trying to dictate anything to anyone, I'm just, uh, making, uh, some suggestions, and I'll be happy to, uh, work on it, uh, next year with my suggestions, but I, I felt that something needed to be said about water, which was, uh, which was very kinda murky and, uh, vague, and, uh, I just wanted to say that I, uh, I'm the newest, uh, member on the team, and I received, uh, eleven thousand, uh, votes, and, uh, I did speak pretty much all last year about quality of life, and people came up to me repeatedly and said, "We're concerned about our quality of life, we seem to be at a crossroads, and we feel that there's a disconnect between what the community wants and what direction the council's going on, going in." So I just want to emphasize that I'm, just didn't pull this, uh, these changes out of, uh, out of midair, that it was, uh, carefully, uh, careful feedback that I've received from the community, from listening to the people, thank you.
Councilwoman Cho?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have to agree that I think we should move forward with what we have in front of us today that we've worked on, but I do really like the idea of maybe pulling this apart in pieces and working on one section, you know, every three months or so, that way we can really kinda dive into that section. Um, so that would be my suggestion, is that we move forward with what we have today, but kinda making a commitment to, to pull this apart in pieces, moving forward.
Tyler, with those couple suggestions, could we look at this again, uh, like by early April, and maybe a portion of it?
Absolutely.
Yeah, could you keep us on task there?
I will.
Mayor Pro Tem, more?
Yes, I'd just like to say, for the sake of the public, that water, quality of life, conservation, has, since I've been on council, has been in our strategic plan, and it is number one objective, and goal number three, quality of life.
Okay, Councilman Blair?
I guess strategic means a lot of things to a lot of people, and I've been here for eighteen years, and had a lot of votes over those years, and have talked to a lot of people over those years. And my standpoint is, is we looked at this, and if, if we wanna bring it back, I'd suggest to the dais here that you look at it now and start plugging in pieces of this puzzle, and putting in your different wordage, verbiage, all that stuff, so when we sit down, we can actually get something accomplished, rather than just changing a word here, or changing a word there. To me, it's a strategic plan, and I think, uh, what Councilman Rusin brings up, I think it's already in the strategic plan, it's on, all on how you look at it. Uh, you know, it's a big picture item, and it's very pointed, and when you start talking about water, you start talking about the great things that we've done, and have we reached that goal? And over year after year after year, we can go back to that first item of water and say, "Here's what we've done," and it's just not one thing, it's many things. So, I think as long as they exist within that guideline, then that's what we need to go by, and we've done that. So I would suggest to all of us, if we don't like our own things that are in there, that we start changing it now, bring it back, and then we can fine-tune it, but I don't see that it's broken, personally.
Councilman Siski?
Thank you. Mayor Oberg assigned a committee from the council to generate the strategic plan, and that was Billy Orr and myself and Gene Wilcox. And we had a variety of ways of looking at things on that, on that, on that committee. What I'm wondering is if we could do a committee with Tyler involved and whoever else on staff, but do a committee of council people to look at what we wanna present to the council for comment.
It's a good suggestion, wow. And so now you kinda have a couple different options in front of you, we could relook at this as a whole council periodically, or we could have, uh, as Councilman Siski mentioned, a specific smaller group look at this, what are your thoughts?
Well, I appreciate Steve's comments, but once again, oh, we had Barry Ehrens leading the way, and we, we sit there going through a four-hour dialogue of what we accomplished, what we haven't accomplished, what we wanna look at. I don't think we really necessarily need a full committee, we did that, and I, and I consider all of us the full committee. If you have specific changes, put them down for the next time we review it, and then we'll review it as a committee. You know, I mean, you can come back, I can come back and say, "Okay, well, after looking at it, I don't like this word or that word," but maybe everybody else does. Okay, well, the democracy we live in, when you go with the majority, 'cause the majority rules, so, that's kinda the way I look at it.
Mayor Pro Tem, more?
And I go back, that we just did this in December. We sat down for half a day as a council in December and developed this strategic plan. We sat down for half a day as a council in December and developed this strategic plan. So again, I would recommend, I agree with Councilwoman Cho, that we move ahead, and then if we want to take one of these, maybe if you want to deal with water quality of life, but let's, let's move ahead. We've got some bigger fish to fry right now. We, we have a great strategic plan in place, and I, I don't want us just spinning our wheels. There's a lot to be done in the city, so if we could, I recommend we vote on this today. If we want to revisit this annually, biannually, but I don't think we have to dissect and wordsmith because I, I think we have the essence of what we need to do in our city on this council.
I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2019-1694.
Second.
Wrong one. Wrong motion.
So we have a strategic plan in front of us, item C? Is that what you're looking at?
Oh, okay. No, I move to approve the 2020 strategic plan. Excuse me.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any public comment out there?
No, Mayor.
Okay, motion and second, please vote.
Passes 6-1.
Okay. Let's move on to item 11D, please.
Adoption of ordinance 2019-1694, authorizing the acceptance of a map of dedication from Chamberlain Development Prescott LLC and Trinity Christian School, Inc., and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said dedication.
Happy New Year, Craig.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Craig Dossett, Public Works. The item I have this afternoon is a very minor item. The item is to accept a map of dedication for right-of-way for a new roadway, Warrior Way, and public utility easement from Chamberlain Development and Trinity Christian School. As I mentioned, this is a very small item. However, as I looked at this, I could see you coming up with additional questions and/or the need for more information to go with this, this item. So Warrior Way, I mentioned would be a new roadway. So on this exhibit, this is Willow Creek Road, and let me go back to that. So we are out in the vicinity of the airport, so Willow Creek Road going up to Highway 89 in the vicinity of Antelope Crossings, Saddlewood, and that area, and Warrior Way is just on the, on the southern edge of that. So this would be the, the dedication and utility easement on, on the west side of Willow Creek Road, as well as a small piece on the east side. So Warrior Way will go into the parcel as it identifies there, Trinity School is part of supplying, part of this right-of-way, as well as Chamberlain Development, then it owns this parcel. So Trinity School on that parcel, the last schedule that we were told was to have students in August of 2021, is where they're going. With this new roadway coming into Willow Creek Road, then there is another piece that So with this exhibit, Warrior Way again is down here on the bottom left, and we pull it up, we can see that the existing Willow Creek Road is just a narrow path on here, and now this exhibit shows design of expanded Willow Creek Road from the south of Warrior Way, going all the way up, and again by Saddlewood, Antelope Crossings, the future Westwood on that side, coming all the way up, and then at this point is where it will connect into the piece that we are currently designing for realignment of the Willow Creek curve. So the developer is also working on the design of this entire corridor and widening of Willow Creek Road that will come into play as well. Warrior Way will be signalized, as well as Lone Elk will be signalized as well through that corridor. The next piece that we are currently working on the design for, then is the realignment of the curve. So on this exhibit, the black is the current curve around that corner, just two lanes. Our design will be delivered later this week, will be at, at 60% design. So our design is encompassing four lane divided with raised center median all the way around that corner, significantly changing the radius of that, as well as putting super into it so the lanes will be tapered appropriately with that curve, and also include some drainage improvements in there.
Got some good banking on that, so I can take that a little faster.
Going to the hill.
It will definitely be significant difference than what we have today. So that brings us back to the simple dedication of Warrior Way. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Very good. That's helpful. Thanks for the totality of that, so we can kind of see what's going on in that area. Councilman Blair?
I have nothing on Warrior Way other than tied to it, which you just did, the overview of Willow Creek Road being expanded. Is that at the developer's cost, question one? Question two, are the two stoplights at developer's cost as well?
The stoplights will be part of that design on the Willow Creek Road expansion and part of the work, the expansion work that they would be doing there, as well as this Warrior Way. The curve then that we are designing, we do not have a, a full agreement in place, but there's been discussions there about partnership between development and the city working on that jointly, because not only, we need some additional right-of-way on the inside of the curve, there's going to be excess right-of-way on the outside of the curve so that we can trade there and then partner on that, on that curve project.
But the, I guess at the point I'm trying to get at, the developer is doing?
The expansion of Willow Creek Road, correct.
But also that the right-of-way already exists for that expansion as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. I know when I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we were looking at the whole Depot Ranch Plandera Development proposal, there was significant discussion and concern about putting schools and other facilities that would potentially be in a risk zone for aircraft departures. And I'd just like to hear from the airport experts whether the location of this school is of concern to them too. I'm not an expert on this, but as I mentioned before, I was living in Sacramento when that F-86 flamed out during a airshow, skidded across a major artery, went up a 15-foot berm, went through some landscaping into a commercial area, crashed into an ice cream barler and killed over 30 people. So we are all creatures of our experience, so to me, it's not a theoretical issue, and I want to make sure that potential children are properly protected. So is there a comment from our airport specialists?
I have a comment regarding the agenda item in the open meeting law. The item in front of us is for the adoption of a map of dedication, right-of-way and a public utility easement. So we may be kind of getting way beyond that particular item as far as what can be brought into the discussion in the public.
Well, we're approving a, a right-of-way, which is in essence rubber stamping the development of this school in this location, are we not?
I, I guess what I can say is that I know in regards to the, the zoning, as well as then the, the maps associated with the airport, that about where the, where my pen is laying in that area is where it identifies the, the flight path, and the properties that are being proposed for the school here are outside of that area and are appropriately zoned.
So you're saying that the FAA risk zones that they identify, this school is outside that risk area?
I mean, my recommendation, if this is something you all want to talk about, we put it on a future agenda item to have that discussion. I think right now we're off agenda.
So we really have to, have to look at this map of dedication and this easement?
Well, all I can say is that without some assurance that this school location is properly located, then I'm not going to vote for it.
Other questions, comments from the council? Mayor Protemore?
Yeah, I just have a question. It seems that when we did the, the master plan for Depot Ranch, that Trinity School was part of that master plan.
It was.
Therefore, your assumption is it's outside of the FAA area for the, the zone?
It was, it was approved, yes, yes.
Or else we wouldn't be here today, considering this.
I mean, I, I know, I know Trinity right now is at my church, and they use our church as a facility. I know they've been planning this for years to go in this location, and so I, I think it's been part of the master plan that's been passed for quite a while ago.
Other questions, comments from the council?
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor.
Okay.
Move to adopt ordinance number 2019-1694, authorizing the acceptance of map of dedication for right-of-way public utility easement from Chamberlain Development Prescott LLC and Trinity Christian School, Inc.
Second. So we have a motion and second. Councilman Rusin, do you have a comment?
Well, I just wanted to add that no matter, we still would probably, they would probably still need the easement, no matter if it was a school or business or some other entity that was going in there, they would still need that easement.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 6-1.
All right. Thank you, Craig. I don't see anything else on the agenda today. I'd like to close with a quote from Martin Luther King. This is a quote I've used before because it's one of my favorites. Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. This meeting is adjourned.